All right.
Oh, we need to get Janice in here to operate that?
She's not here.
Rusty's here.
Rusty's here.
I mean, I didn't know if Rusty knew how to operate that.
Rusty, you want to turn it on?
Janice is getting the last portion.
Okay.
We're up.
That's brutal.
All right, we'll call this meeting of the board supervisors back to order. And, uh, I guess we'll move on down to, well, we're here to talk about...
Mr. Lynn Norris has the floor.
Justice Building, Mr. Lynn Norris and the H and A.
I think you're the only one on the agenda today, sir.
Finance is here.
This is the first sound before we look at the phone.
Thank you.
I have four scenarios in here.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, maybe a real small.
All right. Uh, the first page is on existing debt. I won't tell you where they're in some of the big things. This is a bad crisis phase out. And over in the far right corner, and I do have soft words, so I will try to...
Are you good to go?
If you don't hear me, just say, speak up.
We got you now.
We got you now.
We got you. You're on speaker.
Real good. And in the far right-hand corner over there, the effective tax millage, it shows what, uh, the, uh, the tax millage would need to be to service the debt based on estimated growth and what the assessed valuations would be, uh, respective of that. Uh, when, back when these bonds or the majority of these bonds were issued, we had, we had gone through a twenty-year analysis of your, uh, assessed valuations. We, we broke it year by year. We looked at growth, uh, and back then you were, uh, doing your reappraisals every five years. And, you know, we, we, so we captured all of that. And we, we, I believe, you know, that we had projected about a two or two and a half percent growth in the interim years and a five percent growth in the reappraisal years. And I believe our projections was, was based on half of what the average of those years had been. It's very, very conservative. And with, had we met those projections, our 4.08 mills would have serviced the debt. I know we had, they would have had some conversations and I'm convinced that aside from that, the 4.08 mills would have serviced the debt had we met our growth projections. So, looking at the, looking at that far right corner, you're going to have to have some increase in millage or some reallocation just to service the existing debt. And when I get into one of these scenarios, it's not going to make any sense unless you, you know, you can understand this part of it because one mill would do so much and a half a mill would do so little. You know, it's, uh, and that's kind of what I'm trying to point out that, uh, irregardless of what we do, there's some, you're going to have to be a reallocation or additional millage or money's transferred.
So you're saying next year, we're going to have to add point four mills to our debt service to, just to cover our current debt?
Well, we, in sixteen, we had four point zero eight.
It'll depend on our revenue that we get in this year. I've done a little spreadsheet. I've kept up with it over the years and I agree with Lynn, there's going to be about four to five years there that we're going to have to have any increase. You see where his goes like four three six and then four nine oh, four seven one. Mine's structured evenly and I've got four point five eight, which is going to take for those four to five years, it's going to take about an additional half mill. It's been able to be pushed out a year or two back. Our growth has been better than we anticipated. It was almost three last year. So it pushed us out another year. We get three this year. Then it might can push it back out until sixteen. So, but there's still going to come a point, even if we do three, we're going to have about four or five years in there that we're going to have to have more than four point oh eight in order to meet our debt, existing debt.
And we've had some cash that we could utilize to help with all of this, so, uh, we're drawing yet down too, but maintaining that left, so.
Right.
So we haven't, but we haven't had to draw down yet anything?
The Lynn structured it for our four point oh eight.
Right.
And some years didn't take that, so it built up cash thing out there. So then those years that it's a higher is just the cash from that own fund
To draw down.
that you draw off of for those years that your interest and your principal's higher.
Okay. So what are we doing with the, uh, the net amount that's available now? If we're going to use the three point nine two now and we have four point oh eight, that's point one six. What are we doing with that?
It stays, it stays in the fund, just like I was saying. It stays in the fund for those years that the...
Just to go toward the next?
Right. So in some years, it would have actually been more than four point oh eight, but we, because we collected it on the front side when the higher principal and interest comes, it just keeps it a level factor to keep you from raising and lowering millage every year to suit the needs of the debt.
Are we pretty safe right now, I guess, as far as?
Yeah, we're, we're fine right now, but like Lynn shows here and what I have, that depending on our growth this year, it might be another year out, but sometime around sixteen, seventeen, unless there is significant growth in the county, we're going to have to put on at least somewhere around a half mill to, for those few years
Right.
to pay that. And something John's not doing anymore is, he is doing a reappraisal, but instead of doing one quarter every year and then after the fourth year, that next year, all of it goes on, he's putting it on every year. So we're not ever going to have another reappraisal year that we have that big significant amount out there. It's just going to keep us on an even level.
Well, does that help or hurt, or is it just about the levels out about the same?
It, it works out about the same. It's, it's actually easier to keep it on a level field than it is to wait for that one year to come, for that big bump to come out there.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any questions about that page?
I guess before you leave that page on the far right, I'm looking at twenty twenty-four. Is looking where it basically, the millage basically drops out.
We'll have everything paid off.
Everything's paid off.
Gotcha. Okay.
And we use that in our structuring so we, we can, uh, do our projects and keep our...
Right.
Hopefully, we can keep a good...
Now, that's the current bonds we have outstanding right now?
This is the current bonds we have.
That's everything lumped together?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay?
Uh, the second page is, is a scenario in, uh, based on two percent growth and an eighteen million dollar project. If you, if the project size was eighteen million dollars, what the impact would be, uh, to service that debt. And it would require point eight one mills to service that debt. And if you look at the structuring, I have not structured any principal payments in the years of, uh, the twenty twenty. We're only paying interest. And, and to do this, I'd, I'd need to go through the Mississippi Development Bank to have that ability to structure that in that manner.
So that we can have some rolling off?
So we have, have some rolling off. We're using our cash in the roll-off of the debt. We're picking up after, you know, we have some, enough debt rolled off, we can pick up that principal amortization then. And if you look at, at that buffer line there on twenty twenty, it, by doing what we have and if we meet the growth expectations, our cash in bank is, you know...
Certainly. Certainly.
Yeah, it's, uh...
That's at a three point five percent?
It's at a three point five percent.
That's the best, I mean, is that?
We'll, we'll, we'll go out and bid the bond.
Right.
Uh, not knowing when you're going to do it, it's a conservative rate today.
Okay.
Now, if, these will not be bank-qualifying, so you're going to pay a little higher interest rate because if you have ten million dollars, is your bank qualified ceiling, anything? Go, and that's on a calendar year basis. So that's going to kick the net interest cost up. It won't be three and a half percent every year. It'll be two percent, you know, down. But the net interest cost will be, I have pro forma to three and a half percent. And it's a good rate, it's a good conservative rate now, but who knows?
Right.
Uh, our rate that we would pay would track more closely using a, the ten-year treasury as the barometer, uh, and about seventy-five basis points above that, hundred basis points above that, maybe for a non-VQZ, is about where we would be there. Uh, the ten-year today is, uh, I think it's about a one ninety-five, somewhere in that range right there. Has been as high as three percent last year, one day only. And then, you know, it's been sort of, and it's been stable in the one ninety range right now, so.
So high twos?
High twos, low threes. I've been doing none, these have been rated double A, good rating. Uh, unrated, bank-qualified deals under ten million dollars. They have been, the NIC on those bonds have been three fifteen to three eighteen. I think it's the highest I've had. And we should be twenty-five basis points better than those. But we should be certainly in that range right there, so.
I thought that we currently paid some of our debt out of road fund.
We do, yeah.
So you're just calculating our total? Is that including road too?
No, roads paid, or roads paid out of the road. What's in my four point oh eight does not count. The one, one of them just rolled off in road, uh-huh.
We did pay me in a half dollar.
One just rolled off from there?
Road, mhm.
So what are we, what are we still paying out of there now?
Um, we have one small one, that was the big one, I think, that rolled off. We have one small one and then we have that three hundred and twenty, which is not actually a bond, um, you know, that we pay every year. We still have quite a long time on that.
Okay.
Because, you know, we had, we had talked at one time about not moving any money from road, any millage from road,
Yeah.
but taking the equivalent dollars that we had, were using out of road and just transferring that money.
Yeah.
So therefore, it didn't affect the city.
One of these bonds that the four point oh eight mills cover about half of that or ten, about close to ten million dollars of those are for road, road bonds. But this is paying for it.
Yeah.
And I'm not using any transfers of money like this. And even back, you know, back had the economy held, we could have still done all of that on the four point oh eight.
Right. And we had originally anticipated moving every bit of it over there, but then it just wasn't where we...
We had conversations, a lot of conversations.
Right.
So. Any questions on this?
If we... Well, I mean, okay, we can move on.
Okay. Look at the ending cash.
Which one?
If everything held.
On the ten million dollar one or?
All these scenarios, and I'm sorry, a little stuffed up here. All these scenarios are going to show our cash balance and we'll talk about what we might could do, so, that. Now, the second scenario is a twenty-one million dollar, uh, budget cost. And the assumption here is just, you know, either from whatever purpose, allocation of millage, whatever, you know, you decide to do, what, what would be the impact of? This extra money gives me an opportunity to pay more, more money, more bonds up front. I don't have to go five years without amortizing them. So...
Without paying any principal?
Right, you can pay principal soon.
We, we, we paid principal, you know, two hundred thousand a year, uh, for four years and a hundred. Still looking at twenty twenty and our cash balance there, a little better shape, we're close. Uh, but beyond that, we have, we can, we could shorten these bonds up if you wanted to, to a fifteen-year bond. Still do some structuring, save a lot more in interest by doing that. We would...
You talking about our existing bonds we already have?
No, this new bond.
Okay.
Because the, the, the one mill, we, keep in mind, to do eighteen, we got to put on point eight one mills to service that debt.
Yeah.
We, we do one mill, we can structure it this way. And it gives me, that, that gives me more money to structure with, pay bonds off quicker. And once we get all the old bonds paid off, we can really utilize that and, and shorten the debt with that, that small additional increase there.
Lynn, with these new mills to go toward the new project, new bonds, how are, we still have, this other four or five years, we're still going to have to increase the other debt service?
About a half a mill.
So actually, we're looking at like one and a half?
No, 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 no.
No.
The one covers.
So that one includes all of it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay.
In those scenarios, the half mill is needed to service current debt is there.
Is included.
All right.
So scenario one is an additional point three one mills. Scenario two is an additional point four two.
Well, the eighteen million's additional point eight.
Yeah, it's an additional point eight, but above current debt service?
Yeah.
It's point two three above.
Yeah.
Because even if we do nothing, we're going to have four to five years in there.
Because we have point eight left over, or point one six left over. I got you. Okay. Yeah.
That we have to do something with.
Okay.
Now, and, and look at your ending cash, once the other debt's paid off, and look at the opportunity that you would, what you could do by using structure, by, you know, so.
If you can hang on for till another ten years?
Well, uh, you, you're still in pretty decent shape, ten years, but, you know, if we, if we knew what our plans was, we might structure differently, but, uh, and that's one reason I ran this out on twenty, to, to give us some flexibility there. I believe, wasn't our, our old bonds, were they pretty much all fifteen-year bonds? Don't remember. I, I...
I think they were, they were, I think they were twenty.
Okay. That, that popped in my head, so that's always not good.
See, we didn't know. Yeah, two of them are fifty.
I need to look at it.
Y'all the ones supposed to know.
Our newer ones, Lynn, our newer ones are fifteen, our older ones are twenty.
That's what I...
Yeah, our older ones are twenty.
So the oh seven?
Just did. The eight, nine, the oh eight and oh nine were fifteen.
Fifteen. That's, that's, that's what I remember.
The older ones were all twenty.
Are we good there?
I don't know if it's like good, but... I thought whenever we met during the summer that, or a few months ago, that we had, you did a sheet for us to show where we could do like up to twelve now without any additional millage. I thought we had enough currently to do, uh, within our current millage.
Because we paid off up to a certain point.
I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that counted the money that we would take from road when that bond paid off, that additional money that we would transfer over. It included that money.
Paid the debt service on the road and bridge bonds that are under this millage. That's, that's what those scenarios showed there.
Okay.
Assuming that we was going to use that money or a portion of that money to, to do that. And yes, you could.
So where is that scenario at?
Uh, well, it, it would be, you know, we can always do that.
How much were we talking about then? Was it going to say to, to get where we needed? Because as is, what y'all talking about right now, we're going to have to add millage to do any of this. Right?
Up to one mill.
I thought we had looked at it without having to do any mill, but I mean, up to a certain point.
That's what I...
We did, but that was including this road bond that just, that is in road, that just paid off. Not reducing the millage in road, but taking the value of what we're using on debt service in road and transferring it over into this bond fund allows you to carry on without any increase because you're bringing over a million.
It's a million dollars a year, right?
And service in that ten to twelve million dollar range.
About a million dollars a year.
Which, I guess the next question would be, which, which court are you going to build? And which one are you going to leave out?
That's exactly what I was sitting here thinking.
That's what it comes down to, because we don't have a, a twelve million dollar project in front of us.
But we can currently take the money out of road and bridge right now today and it's not going to impact us at all because we've been paying that money all along for a bond.
A million, a one mill.
And it's not going, it's not going to impact.
One mill, right?
About, about a million, nine seventy-five million, somewhere right there.
About a mill, a mill of millage.
Uh, it's really close to like three quarters, I would say.
Yeah, I'm just, what I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, it wouldn't affect us because we, we hadn't been using that anyway.
Right.
Right, it's just taking what we had been using for years and moving it over into the debt service to transfer our funds, not moving the millage.
And basically, what we need is another million dollars.
To put us to...
To get us to be able to build an eighteen million dollar building.
Okay, eighteen, okay.
Yes, sir. That's about right.
One will bill one, two will bill two. What do you say?
So we need to come up with a million bucks?
Every year.
Additional money? Without raising taxes?
It's going to handicap us for anything else from now to...
For quite a period of time, probably fifteen years.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the cash.
Cash, you may be able to make some pay there.
Oh, yes, yes.
If you look at what?
The cash.
The cash balance over here.
Pay down the debt faster.
Yeah, see, you build up to, if you didn't, if you did the existing debt in this, this is twenty-one, uh, in ten years, you'd have seven and a half million dollars. To do something with, to move millages around, but if you have a capital plan and a dedicated levy, which this, this would be, you can, you can do a whole lot more. I mean, that's...
Right. Because typically, what a, an independent bonding interest fund does is you can see when, when you get down here to like twenty twenty-four and, or the year before that, what you do is when you don't need as much, you'd start reducing your millage. Each year, your millage would change, but you'd reduce it on out until you virtually had very little left in that fund. But keeping an even structure like this, that's what produces your ending cash that you have to do something with over there.
And you can take that cash and do projects, or you can take that cash. The bond issues will have a call date. Usually, it's half line, ten years, can be shorter. You pay a little higher interest rate, say ten years. You can start using that money to pay these old...
Pay the debts down.
To pay the debt out. That, and it's in inverse order, so you go out and pay in parts. You don't have to pay that whole debt to pay it back. It's better to pay it off, but you shorten it up like that.
Is the radio systems, is that in the debt, or is that, we don't have to worry about that?
Mm-mm. That's the lease.
Okay.
Well, we got it budgeted, I mean.
Yeah, no, we got it budgeted.
We have to budget it, but that's out on the nine one one fund is where we're budgeting that from, and that's the lease.
You got, uh, nine one one got kind of kicked down a little bit this time too, didn't it?
Right. So we'll be safe with that too then? We'll be safe with that also?
Yeah, it's supposed to be self-funded for probably now, next four years.
That's why we pay down that five million dollars.
Right, right.
Right. Because we paid off, we paid off the other note we had out there and so this one's just going to pick up.
Okay.
Unless our revenue somehow drastically reduced.
Okay.
You know, we'll be fine out there.
Okay. So we either take the money out of road and bridge or raise taxes?
For what?
What other options do we have?
For what, to build both of them?
To build a, yeah. I mean, no matter what, Jerry, we're going to have to either remodel, reconstruct. We're going to do something on both of them, you know?
I know. But you saw what the road plan had. You start taking money out of road and bridge. I mean, that's always the go-to, go-to well. We've already gone to it. I, I, we may have to cut back on, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what, I'm sitting here thinking about what other choices we could have.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well...
We either raise taxes or we take it out of road and bridge.
Or you're going to take it somewhere else, right.
And we don't have anywhere else to take it other than road and bridge.
We, no, sir, we don't. And, you know, you're taking it out of road and bridge fund. You're taking what has been used to service debt, but then you have to look at it too. When it was freed, it was freed up, you know, for other purposes, so it's, it's y'all's call.
I'm not talking about what's freed up. I'm talking about additional to be able to cover it all.
Well, he thought of taking more out of road and bridge.
Yeah.
Like the half off a bridge that you had talked about and then the surplus out of the road?
Yeah.
Didn't we add some back that's past?
We had three, took one away, added a half mill back, so it's still down.
Two and a half?
Yes, two and a half.
Two and a half down.
Well, it's down a half from what it originally was.
Right. Lynn, you're in our shoes. We need to build a twenty, we need to spend twenty million dollars to get facility built. So how would we come up with it? I'm not putting you on the spot or anything.
Oh, no, no, I like to be...
Grow the tree.
Think about this. We need, for about five years, we will need funding. Maybe we could take that allocation for five years, run my scenarios based on that, and then that goes back to road and bridge. We wouldn't need that, we wouldn't need that money.
It goes back, just like this we took out last. It never got back either.
Are you talking about?
Half a mill.
Transfer of funds, not taking millage.
Yeah, no, not millage. It's just transfer and...
He said allocation.
Allocation, right.
Allocation.
But are you talking about the amount of money that we have freed up now?
The, the, that is, right.
You think that's enough to be able to service twenty million dollars, so?
We'll need it to service twenty million dollars. We need to get past... We need to get past, we either need to have good luck, uh, growth.
Get the old debt paid off, Jay.
Just push it down the road.
Paid off, you got more millage that's coming into bonded design, it's coming in to service the new debt from.
But you think that'll be enough to get us by for five years? Then we're gonna have to answer the question.
Well, we, we will know. I mean, let me run that scenario and we'll see the impact. And, and you're in control because you're transferring the money from.
Right.
It's not dedicated millage. It's an allocation.
Cause if that was a fifteen, fifteen-year bonds, you said, roughly about?
Well, the one that, the one that paid off, which one did we have in road that?
I haven't sold the roads, I, since it was just. I did at one time, I didn't here.
Yeah, that one that paid off wouldn't have been one of, would have been one of the older bonds.
But the newer ones were fifteen, correct?
Right.
So they're only about seven and a half, eight years out.
Twenty twenty-three and twenty-four.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, all you did pays out twenty-four.
Okay.
That, that could get us there to. Or say how much we need to get us there.
You obviously aren't gonna rely on it, but growth is, is simply a factor in these scenarios. We don't have any way to predict that. If growth projections are too conservative in these estimates and turns out better than we think, obviously these numbers change.
Well, we need to leave it conservative.
You got to.
Yeah, no.
I, I don't disagree at all. I just think some of the, you know, that, there are some realities out there. I think the possibility of things improving more so than they have in the recent past, I feel a little bit better about it.
Well, definitely it's start on upswing anyway compared to what we have gone through.
Feel better about it.
Well, we've already, by refunding a lot of these, we've already pushed a lot of them out. That's why we have these big payments coming up, huh? Five years out.
Our refundings actually helped us where we wouldn't have as many years that we needed that additional millage. Our structure was the same way on those fifteen-year bonds as this is. It was sort of toward the back end and then the last two or three, it reduced down again.
All right. So I guess, going back to what Jay's asked, what do you think?
I think we need to run that scenario.
Right.
I mean, I don't wanna, this is a policy, just, I wanna do what you want.
Right, but I mean.
I'm here to help you.
Well, you know what, what we need, and so, yeah, if we can run any scenario, then I think that's, I mean, that's what we need from you, really.
Yeah, if we could get your laptop out of the truck.
You know, it, I left it, I laid it out to bring it.
In your head, I know you know the numbers.
I don't know if anybody can calculate that much in their head.
Oh, he's pretty close to it.
I, I'm much, much more comfortable with the computer.
Yes, I understand.
I, I stick my foot in my mouth most all the time, and I sure would, kind of.
Well, we already know we have enough that's unallocated that we can cover enough for twelve million dollars of debt. So really, we just have to make a, put it off long enough to be able to get the other six paid.
And I, you know, I look at a couple of scenarios.
Or eight.
Maybe wanna spread the debt out a little longer, you know, we, with the, see what we can do there. Not longer than twenty years. Getting past twenty twenty, or, over the next five years.
I think that's imperative for us to know where we're at and what we have, decisions we have to make.
Oh, bother me.
Before we can go and find out how much cutting we're gonna do on the building.
Right.
Right now, we soldered up pretty small.
We already know we get some elevators, so. That's a given. Thinking we get some exercise over here.
You don't need, we don't need windows or anything in there, do we? Bare bones.
Roof is optional.
Bare bones. Go back to the drawing board, let's see if we can make that thing about seven million.
You know, this is, this is just really typical, you're bringing in this great news on this April fifteenth. It goes along with everything else.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I feel like I just got ready to get up and leave out of my accountant's office. I go in there pumped up and come out, shoot, dragging. I just wanna look over my shoulder and. House of doom, that's what I tell her, say, you're a, you're the most oppressive place to come.
So what's the third page here?
This, this, this meeting didn't take long, did it?
No, that didn't take long at all.
The third page is just what could we do with a half a million?
On what, the last page?
The last page. And because of making the point that a debt, our existing, uh, debt requires more than a current millage. There's very little that a half a million would get us. And it's takes some serious structuring to get us there. That's the longest term I can go and not bust out, in this case, twenty twenty-one. If I went out twenty years, twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one would be close to a million dollars deficit. So this is absolutely the maximum that I can get.
I, I'm still figuring, trying to see how you gonna pull this rabbit out of your hat. Cause it looks to me like we got debt service payments pretty consistent over the next ten years or so. At least eight of six million dollars a year.
What I'm gonna do, if, if you want me to run that scenario, the debt service that unallocated that's rolled off. And then I'll structure around our existing cash in that case.
Yeah.
To see how we get there.
All right. And see how much that'll let us cover, how much we can build with that?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, cause I'd rather not.
Well, I don't think that's gonna get us there though, Jerry, we still gonna be short, so.
Uh, let me, let me work on.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can't, you know, it's, it's just so easy to keep going in that savings account, but it's hard to put it back in there. And that's, that's the way I look at it.
How, how long have we been without access to that part of road and bridge that has been?
That we've been paying that million dollars a year?
How long has that been happening?
Fifteen years.
So you, you've been without it for?
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I understand we've been without that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about going back more, so we went back several years ago.
I, I think what's being proposed is the possibility that we won't have to go back.
Right, and if that's the case, I'm, I'm, that's great. But I'm not talking about adding back, but Jay's thinking we're gonna have to take more out of it.
Right.
And I, we got it to take too, because there's a reason why we got such a healthy balance in our road fund. Because we should be spending twelve million dollars a year on that and we don't.
We're spending one to seven, right?
Bringing more money back every year. And I know we have road plan now and that's forty million dollars that we could spend today, but that's, you know, our whole county.
Well, I understand, but. Anyway, I'd like to try to not go there.
To take any additional.
Huh?
To take any additional.
No, I, I, I look at the others gone. I'm, I look at it, it's, we've already been, we're using it, we keep using.
What we have already.
Yeah, I'm not looking at that, going back in there with it. It would be great if we could.
Well, Jared, I ain't necessarily jumping down to do it, but I'm gonna do that versus raise taxes.
Well, I'm not raising taxes either, but I may cut some walls off.
Yeah.
Cause I think the infrastructure is very, just as important as anything else we do. If you can't maneuver people around and move and, and, and keep improving your infrastructure, it's kinda like you can't improve your schools, you're not gonna keep growth. I mean, it's all, all of us in the same thing, same picture.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, we, we not there yet, let's see what we, what you come up with.
Yeah, it won't take long, I mean, that's.
Okay.
Can have a quick turnaround.
All right, well, you gonna take ten minute break?
We're serious.
He's serious that he didn't break his computer too, he doesn't have his module.
Do recess?
What in reality are you looking at, quick turnaround?
Oh, one day next week.
One day next week?
We'll be gone.
We're gone, okay, let's say that.
Be good.
I got, I do it tomorrow, but I gotta, oh, I got at least a half a day to be in store.
I mean, the next meeting, oh, next meeting we have is what, May the?
Is the thirtieth?
Thirtieth. What about the thirtieth, guys? That's fifteen days.
Oh, oh, that, okay.
Cause they're gonna be gone next week, so.
Okay.
That sound good, everybody? I mean, we gotta have every option.
Today, I guess it is.
Every option we can get.
Play force, play force, look for drive.
So when you come back, Lynn, would you also, uh, as you're gonna take our cash that's available, everything's available, and see how much that'll get us? And if it doesn't get us what we need, we need to have some real numbers to where we are gonna be.
Right.
Where we need to be. Or what are we gonna take out of road, or what are we gonna raise taxes to get us where we need to be?
I mean, if you could, when you do it, if you could email it to me.
You know you wanna raise them.
Craig and I'll look over it and if we see that it's not sufficient, we'll. Look at where we can take from.
All right. Okay. Good thing Dale missed this meeting. I wouldn't get another road overlaid.
He forgot about the unit system.
What you got, a county road now?
I got too many, need work.
There is some down Old Phantom Road, isn't there?
Hey, you rest assured that mosquito control, vector control, peel, axe and bucket ain't gonna take your wife from getting paid.
That's true.
That's gonna be windfall profits.
We're gonna have to make sure Lynn knows about that, forty-seven.
Yeah.
We're getting, we're getting a hundred forty-seven a month with peel, axe and bucket on vector control, so.
Add that in.
A hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Make sure you add that in.
A month, it's a month, man.
Not a hundred forty-seven thousand, a hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Some calculations on how much that'll debt service.
I, I can, I'll sit.
Right at, right at three hundred a month now.
Three hundred.
It won't even cover.
We'll give you that six.
That was two days of negotiating too.
Two hundred ninety-four dollars.
All right. We done with Lynn?
I reckon so.
Okay.
Enjoy your time at the dentist.
Thank you, Lynn.
I appreciate you.
All right, buddy, see you on the thirtieth.
Yes, thank you.
Architects wanna say anything?
I don't know. Joe, you wanna say anything?
You got anything else to say, you whip down too. Have y'all been back there?
Y'all are speechless.
Have you all, have you all been back there making cuts while we're talking? You had time.
Did you bring your computer?
You know, we have the easy job, I mean, I realize y'all have a hard job funding this. I will tell you, I mean, we can go back, we'll, we'll work at whatever figure you have, but there is not a lot of fluff in these buildings.
Nah, well.
And, you know, there is, there's a hundred thousand, couple of hundred thousand here and this, that and the other, but there's no five, ten million dollars to cut out.
Yeah.
Now, if you wanna build, you know, Chancery Court or Justice Court, yes, there's some standing, you know, if you're just doing one of them, but.
Let me ask you. We eliminated the thought that there's any way to use, turn the old, uh, Chancery into Justice, didn't we? Because of everything about.
Same issues that it has.
Thanks, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's renovation you have.
I mean, but we eliminated that, there was no, feasibly, it was not gonna happen because one thing's got downstairs and everything else.
Yeah, the parking especially for a Justice Court approach there.
That, that's one of the main issues is, is the parking. And, and both facilities have issues with ADA and codes.
Right.
You can, you can renovate those facilities and spend, you know, spend a lot less than building one new one, but the problem's gonna be when you do that, and I don't know exactly how much you're talking about, but, when you do that, you're gonna have a renovated old facilities that, that won't be, you know, in a few more years, you'll have to come back and do something else in them. Obviously, there's needs in this county for both roads and, and buildings, uh, you know, and, and that's the, you know, the hard situation. It's just that these buildings are potentially have issues that I think the county's been fortunate at this point that have not come up. I think in the future, something's gonna, you know, could potentially happen. But we can certainly go back and relook at, at, uh.
Did you, on that, uh, scheme three, I know you, did you take out everything and read total, what the totals were?
Right, right, you're saying if you took out, if you took out the land records and you did not do any improvements to the other two facilities, it's probably somewhere between one and a quarter to one and a half million dollars less cost if you did that. At least that's what I came up, just roughly figuring it. Now, that's, that's taking, at this point, taking square footage and using the same dollars you put in to take out. Which never happens in real, in real life, but in this scenario, at this stage, that's, that's the only thing you can compare in apples and apples. What happens though, the, the conundrum is, when you reduce the size of something, your unit costs go up. Because the bigger the building, the less the square foot cost, cause there's some savings in, in the quantity. But that, but in order to, to just compare apples and apples, we went back and took out, there's approximately, I wanna say six thousand square feet, taking the land, uh, in that land records. If you take that out and you go back and figure the savings, then that comes out to somewhere between quarter, one and a quarter million to one and a half million dollars. So that's.
What did you take out, the remodeling of this facility and all that too? Okay, all right. So we're looking at about a million dollars?
Yeah, million and million, you know, again, we're playing with a large range, I realize right now, but.
Yeah.
Until we, we could get, uh, things looked at. But, you know, again, we're going back and looking at, uh, current facilities, what current construction's costing and then what's been done in the past. And, uh, but, you know, on the day you did this thing, it could be that everybody's hungry, uh, extremely hungry.
Well, I think we'd be foolish to not do it on that.
Yeah, I'm using, I'm just like Lynn, I'm using conservative figures at this point, but I don't know how else to do that at this point. And, uh, you know, we work, if you've got a certain money you gotta spend, we go back and look at, and look at what, what can people live with.
Well, if we were to cut out, say, a courtroom, is that gonna save us, uh, much money?
Not, not really. We looked, I did look at that, uh, Jay, I looked at, uh, first thing I looked at is taking out that small courtroom on the justice facility, and that would be the simplest because, uh, if you're trying to cut costs, you could then rearrange, cause it's only on one level. You could rearrange the prosecutor's office, but you're talking about half million dollars, which, you know, half million dollars is a half million dollars. Maybe a little more, maybe a little less. If you look at right now, taking out a, a Chancery courtroom, reducing that, that's gonna be more difficult, cause that's up on the second floor, and now we gotta look at how we're gonna rearrange all that. If you shelled it in, there's probably a couple of hundred thousand, maybe quarter million dollars savings. If you took it out completely, assuming you can take it out and rearrange, and you make that savings, then you're. If you took it out completely, assuming you can take it out and rearrange, and you make that savings, and you're maybe a half million dollar savings.
You're talking about just shell it in for future?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying that's only gonna save what?
Well, somewhere, right now, I figured two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, maybe three hundred thousand dollars, uh, because it's about, uh.
So, the space would be there for?
Right, the space would be there, and I mean, they, I'm sure they could use it for something else right now, this approximately, well, when I say that, I'm saying, taking out the courtroom and the judges' chambers that go with that, so that's about fifteen hundred square feet. So, uh, so there's two to three hundred thousand dollars savings there, we're anticipating, because you'd have the structure, you'd have the initial mechanical systems, but you wouldn't have the ductwork necessarily in there, so you're, you're talking about finishes and, uh, lighting and stuff like that. So, that's where the two, so you're cutting about half the square foot cost out of doing that, just shelling it.
Well, those two together, that's, that adds up.
Almost, eight hundred thousand, uh, seven hundred.
And one of them elevators, take out one of those, what's the elevator gonna run us?
Fifty.
Well, the cost of the elevator's fifty, but by the time you put the shaft in, you're talking about about a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, there's another hundred thousand, cause we really don't need two elevators in Chancery.
No, it's not, it, it was, it's, it's not needed to move public, it's just a security issue, but they can cross the hall, they don't, obviously, it's an optimal, but, you know, save money now and do that, and.
And not lose the efficiency of the building.
Right, right. It's a very efficient, I'm, to be honest with you, I, I'm surprised that the building came out as efficient as it did. I was expecting it to be less efficient, but it's really for all the, the needs that we understand. Now, we, we still haven't gone back to them, we, we always pose to the users, what can you do without? What do you absolutely have to have, and what can you do without, if, you know?
Do you expect them to mark anything out?
No, but we, we, we tried to lead them in that way, we look at it, I mean, no, I mean, usually, it's just the opposite, this is what they wanna add.
Alright, well, the, the thing, I think I've asked this before, I think we talked about earlier, the amount of storage area that they're planning on having, it is to store the files that they will need, uh, to help for public access, not just to have storage.
That's, that's my understanding, we will revisit that with them. We really did not increase the storage much over what they already have, uh, in any of the, any of the rooms. They have a few issues in, in court records with attorneys being able to access that because of high-density shelving. Only one attorney at a time can, when you roll those things back, only one attorney can get in there, and they would prefer not to have that, but that saves space.
Well, what, what about the, what happened to all the e-filing and things?
Well, that can be done, but our understanding in, in our initial meetings, that they still had to maintain, uh, hard records on a lot of this stuff.
Well, I mean, it may be really an absurd question to ask, but is that anything that, are those anything that could be scanned? Where they could be for filing?
Well, I would, well.
I mean, it may be astronomical price, huh?
Justice Court that can start doing some of that, maybe, but I, I think Larry's already doing scanning everything. I don't know if he can get rid of any more records.
I was wondering about the, any of the older stuff, could be.
I think he's hauling all that over.
I thought.
Yeah.
Hadn't they been doing that already?
Scanning.
Yeah.
The, the older stuff.
I don't know how much, but they're scanning.
I don't know what they've been doing at court, I don't know much about the court side, I just know about land records. Of course, they're scanning everything now in land records, but we do still have old documents that we have not scanned.
How far back they go?
They don't go back to the eighties?
Sixty seven on some volumes, but not all.
Okay.
To what now?
Sixty seven.
Oh.
You know, if we can, if, if, if we can get rid of all the hard copy records, which I don't think can be done, but if we can get rid of a large of it and scan it, then, then obviously, cause they, they're all, they're all going to the computers anyhow, I just don't know what the legal requirements of that are at this point. Obviously, the land records is, you know, we got one big room, that's three thousand square feet, which is basically what they have right now that keeps the main land record books. And I don't, I don't know if you can.
I don't think that can go anywhere, right, and it's the state.
I didn't think.
Some of it, but.
They update some of it, they move some of it.
Well, so, we're not gonna move anymore to market.
Not gonna do what?
Not gonna move anymore to market, cause I asked, and it said no.
Well, what's that market?
The storage facility.
I know that, but I mean, what are you storing there?
Very, very old documents in a, uh, air-conditioned.
Well, as it grows, what, what do they continue to?
Well, we don't make the books anymore, we're scanning them in, so we don't, we're not gonna have a, a lot more volume of books, it's just we have what we have.
Oh, okay, I see.
Gotcha.
But that's, you know, that's the other big, but we did not, we really did not, for that very reason, thinking that most in the future, a lot of this is gonna be electronic. We have not increased the storage.
Capacity?
Yeah. Now, some of it, there's some sealed records, I think, uh, that we did increase, they, they don't really have enough room, court sealed records that they have to have on site, my understanding, but we can revisit that also, but that's not a, that's not much bigger room.
This is a very small.
And then they have an evidence room that they, that I understand was way too small right now, that obviously, you gotta have that on the slide. So, there's some things that we can revisit with them.
So, have you looked at some of the things we suggested and, and, and come up with how much cuts total yet?
How much what?
A total we can cut? Yeah.
On what things?
Well, just some of these.
Like we just talked about?
I think, you know, at this point, we're still anticipating going back to the users, and of course, stating what those cuts.
When y'all figure on going back to the users?
We're allowing those meetings up for possibly, uh, meetings tomorrow.
Okay.
That's very safe, we've got dates that only go, we'll, we'll have those meetings most likely before Lynn comes back.
Well, that'd be kinda nice for them to understand, kinda what, if they'd have been, you know, sitting here, then all of a sudden hear what we're having to.
Fight with.
Fight with, right.
It, it's at a point now where we all realize, they haven't even seen the way, except for hard copies that were presented, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
They haven't seen anything, for all, for all we know, quite honestly, one of them, one of the departments could very easily say, you know, we might have a different way of doing this, and could save us some room, now, I realize that's, that could be pie in the sky, but I mean.
Well, when you talk to them, you let them know that the, I mean, let them, I mean, be straight with them, that the funding may cut a lot of things. So, I mean, if they can help on some of these ideas or something else they know of that we're not aware of, and we don't use the building.
Right.
And we're not the users, right.
I think that's the way to approach it, I think that, you know, it's like Carl mentioned earlier, you know, you kinda, we, we work backwards now from what we got. This is, you know, we need some help from them organizing their spaces a little bit differently, seeing what can be done as far as making some cuts, taking out some of the overstated stuff, uh, two elevators, what have you, uh, looking at the storage side of it, where it's going with, uh, scanning, and, um, you know, it just, it's gonna take a little bit more time to meet with them and figure it out on our end.
But there might, I anticipate there can be possibly some square footage savings, but I don't, other than storage, or taking out some courtrooms, I don't see any large, cause it's basically what they have now, we have one more office for a constable and future Justice Court judge, and we've got, you know, we got four suites for the Chanceries, and, and, so, other than taking one of those suites out, which is what I just talked about in savings.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what else there is, uh, but we may, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll go over each, each space with each user, and we'll try and lead that conversation, otherwise, it'll grow.
Well, just, do the constables, do, do they have to have an office in there?
We're not giving them an office, we're giving them four workstations, basically, yeah. We, we, we looked at that, uh, and now, we did each, the, uh, the land records area and the court records area, we did increase. They don't, the clerks don't have offices, they have workstations, but now, we did increase those based on what they told us they need. Uh, and if you've been over to those spaces, they are minimal, I mean, the court records is, is very small, and land records is not much, not much bigger. The general work area, we cut out, we didn't provide, we did not provide a conference room in the Chancery clerks area, because, uh, you know, he said that he generally has a conference table in his office, so we, we, we increased his office a little bit, accommodate a little small table, seat six. That's a lot, lot less cost than providing a separate conference room, typically, you would see a separate conference room to have a meeting with, but. So, there, there, we've already done some things to, to do some savings, uh, but these buildings have a lot of public, you know, a lot of public circulation in there every day, and that's, that takes up room in corridors and places to sit, and try and avoid, uh, you know, issues.
There were a couple of things that I remember, but now, not the time to even bring them up, but before we had anything final, that I had questions on, but it's just a rearranging of some, the way some have laid out, because I think would help on security and keeping people flow going in the right directions, but that's not anything we need to cover now, we're not, we don't know, that may partly eliminate.
Well, you know, I went and looked at all these courtrooms, because I thought the Justice courtroom, the main one, maybe could be downsized, but I tell you, the day I was there, it was flat full, and I had thirty, at least thirty people standing, and it seats a hundred and fifty. Now, the whole, the idea, I think, of having a separate, smaller courtroom is to take care of the meat load and maybe help reduce that. The Chancellor, Chancellor Courts, they seat about forty each, which is what was requested now. You know, we questioned that when we were doing that, and there was some conversation about they do have cases, and they got people coming as witnesses, and different things that, uh, you know, you know, a nasty divorce where they could have forty or fifty people in there. I, I hadn't seen that, but that's what, uh, what we were told, if I remember correctly. But, so, I mean, we can look at trying to downsize those a little bit, but the problem is, most of that space is eaten up by, uh, judges, attorneys, witnesses, court reporters, desk and things, and, uh, so we could look at those, I mean, they're pretty tight. We did not, we did not make them quite as big as the judges asked for. So, we, when we laid out the furniture, we felt like we could downsize that some.
Well, I'm sure new judges, they don't need near as much space, so we can go ahead and cut that down some more. I imagine it's even, someone will probably campaign on that.
Well, we, I felt like, that most of the people we talked to were very reasonable, for instance, the Justice Court judges did not need individual private restrooms in their offices, so we did not provide those, and, uh.
Good.
You know, things like that, we didn't provide.
They gotta have some exercise, get up and going.
What about for the Chancery judges, they don't have them either, do they?
Oh, yeah.
They do?
They don't, why would they need that?
Oh.
They might use ours, too.
You built a shower up in there also?
No, we didn't put a shower, there was a request for additional private toilets, but we nixed that, we didn't think that was appropriate, in difference to my office.
Really?
Well, I see we might can save some right there, have a community bathroom.
Poor John.
If, uh, if our population.
I just put some shells up, future, back road bridge.
Well, who calls for those additional people?
It's a Justice Court judge, uh, at one fifty is the break point, but it's all discretionary with the board.
Okay, so we ain't getting another one then?
No, we are not adding a fifth judge, even though you've hit the one fifty.
Okay, cause if you do a judge, you have to do a constable also, right?
That's correct.
And then adding another constable, that's cutting in all their fees. I guarantee you, they don't want another one.
Well, you know, we can take out an office, I think, is a hundred and twenty square feet, so you're not talking about a ton of money, they probably could use it for something else, but, uh, I mean, if you want one in the future. But what we're, what we're trying to do, what we're looking at in this building, these buildings will last fifty to seventy-five years. Now, they may outgrow some of their stuff, but as far as the structure, the outside, you know, they're gonna be here for about fifty to seventy-five years. That doesn't mean you have to update mechanical systems, things like that, that's what, you know, you're designing for.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to cut some off these buildings, because.
Probably not by then.
As you've heard, I mean, even if we get to twenty million, that's including the land acquisition too, you know, so.
We don't know what that is, yeah.
Speaking of which.
Yeah.
Kinda seems like we've got the cart before the horse here, we, we're not even resolved to where we're gonna put it, never mind.
Well, we know where we can't put it, we know where we can't put it, but we may not can put it there either, cause we don't have the money.
We gotta have a firm.
Or maybe two camps.
And I'm.
So, can you put it over here?
I'm not sure exactly how, how the best way to handle it is, some of you guys may have to get involved.
On what?
On visiting with Trustmark.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I visited with him a long time ago, and even back then, his conversation with me was, if you'll give me a place out there to build our cookie cutter, new Trustmark branch bank, we'll work out something and y'all can take over our bank downtown.
Take over the bank too?
Yeah, they'll let us have their building, and we'll let them build a new building out here. One out.
Well, the Chancellor, the Justice going that building?
Scenario.
We hadn't even looked at it.
Yeah, no, just picking.
You know, the problem you get into with, with, with the Chancery building right now, it's never designed as a courthouse, and you try to get, get in there, and I'm, I would assume that'd be some of the same issues, uh, but we, we can certainly look at that building, I don't, I have no idea what the floor plan is or.
There's a reason why they are real generous with that building, and it's because utilities are outrageous, the layout is gangly, unworkable.
You still have the parking issue, yeah.
Well, I'm not giving up any property over here, that's our only place to go.
Take over the Trustmark building, I'm just saying, that's what Hal offered.
That's exactly.
So, we need to get back with him and, and try to get this going?
Yes.
I don't really, I know him just from, you know.
Quantum Hut next door to him is rented, is leased out.
Right.
And, I mean, we'd have to buy out the lease and.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You know, Farm Bureau building down here.
That's correct.
Probably some asbestos in it. Well, first of all, we'd have to buy it from the Maras, I think they own it, don't they?
Well, they, they have the lease.
Yeah.
School District, sixteen century property, School District controls it, we, we, I, I think we can work something out in the School District, but.
You said what?
The issue of the existing use.
Yeah.
And the cost of the structure on it.
And not only that, Brandon probably isn't too excited for us coming here and tearing it down, you know, they liked the property taxes off of it.
I, I think they would probably.
I'd like to be receptive to.
I think they would.
Get rid of it?
But I, I just, I don't know that that's gonna be economically viable or efficient, uh, just thinking long-term, I've always, I say always, I've sort of leaned toward the option of the existing Chancery building coming down and providing parking for Trustmark's employees where it is, in exchange for them.
I think that was even, uh, you know, that's what, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to?
Seventy-five to a hundred and twenty thousand, that's the conservative figure, cause I, I got a contractor to give me a quote on that, or what he thought, and I thought it was actually too low, so I, I actually increased that number, so, I mean, the quote he gave me was somewhere around fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Which, which he didn't have time to look at in detail, but he said that's about, basically, what he thought would cause them, so I did increase that at this point, just for budget.
I mean, parking spaces, you think that would provide for them even, I mean, would that be an adequate number?
What do they need, thirty? Parking that is currently behind the Chancery building, that's in place now, that parks a dozen.
Oh.
Remember, we extended the park?
Yeah.
But took, uh, the city moved that pump house building?
Yeah.
That gave them an additional four or six spaces, I wanna say, and they were already using inside the fenced area, uh, spaces that covered at least that many again. I'm, I'm thinking there's probably a dozen spaces that are currently available at Chancery. You take the building out, and I'm doubling that, now you're up to twenty-four, and they need about twenty-five to thirty.
I don't even know if that's really what his goal is, I mean.
Apparently not. Apparently, the goal is to clear out of the building they're in, and go to another location that suits them better. And we, I don't know if Ms. Laura remembers, and I think, I think we were together in the meeting with Al, where we mentioned what if the Chancery building came down and we could put that, convert that into parking that you guys would, would have access to. He, he was open to that, but it wasn't, wasn't really, like, excited about it.
Well, if you can, uh, come to some type of resolution with him, is there other people to, to go meet with? Because I know he said every time that it's not up to him.
He keeps telling us it's gotta go to Jackson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has anybody been to Jackson?
Well, it's really him going to Jackson, he's the president of the metro division. I don't know who's above him.
So, one of y'all want to meet with Craig and him?
I don't mind meeting with Craig and him. Or let the president.
One of us.
I don't care.
That'd be a good job for the president board.
If, if we could go to him and say, this is what, this is what we believe the board is ready to support, and not have multiple options to discuss.
Yeah.
This is what, can we count on your assistance, can we count on your help? To me, that is, would be a better approach than what we tried.
Yeah.
With this, tell us, tell us what you want, tell us what you need.
Yeah, because until we get that done, we can't do really anything.
We need somebody that can go and look him in the eye and tell him that piece of property is not available.
Well, I can do that part.
I'd like you to go.
Uh, just as a, I don't mind going.
Yeah, I'll go with you.
But.
Jared and Greg.
Sounds good to me.
I mean, I've known him a long, long time.
So we gonna recess till six o'clock tonight?
We'll go now while we're recessed.
I think it's a great idea myself, you know.
I'm already here. Which time? I'm not joking. I mean, I'm already here.
Yeah.
I'll go where you're running.
Alright.
Let's walk in, get in. He's there, we can get in there and get out.
Alright. Carl, you need us?
No, I mean, we, we got our work cut out to us, and I guess the next step for us is to go back to the users.
You gotta figure out how to do a lot of shrinkage.
We do love the building you laid out, though.
Oh, we do.
Except for a couple of things.
Well, some of us love the building you laid out.
Well, that's always refined.
Which one?
Which one?
One, two or three?
Well, you know which one I like the most, but. Alright.
Okay.
Restress till six o'clock.
Right. Most of recess six o'clock, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Keith.
I was wrong, Greg.
Any discussion? All say, all in favor of say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, I was wrong, Greg, it's tonight, not tomorrow night.